I looked at it and I just don't understand how the taxes go up on a house like that. In my house that I live in right now, nine zero four Langston Drive here in Shelby, the taxes don't hit where that's in my escrow, because I haven't paid for my house yet, you know, my escrow. So I managed that, but the property I got up there in London, that house, now that the taxes up on here is, I think, is really too much. The taxes is more actually than what the house is worth, really. So if anybody can help the old veteran, he sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. Thank you for your comments. The next item is the consent agenda. We all been presented the items in the consent agenda in our packets and had an opportunity to review those. I've reminded boards when we approved the agenda, we deleted item N from this consent agenda. So it'll be items A through M. With that, entertain a motion to approve.
That moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? And here none of our people will say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Let's hear unanimous. First item on the regular agenda tonight is the Conservation Easement Trust Fund Program. Over to David Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you this evening is, as the chairman stated, the Conservation Easement Trust Fund Program. And this would establish a funding vehicle for acquiring conservation easements within Cleveland County. And it would complement the state program. It would, some of the goals are to promote agriculture, reduce land use conflicts, making sure that subdivisions don't share a property boundary with the active farm. And one of the recommendations is that we would establish a fund through the properties that would be coming out of present use value every year with a cap of $50,000 and seeding that with an initial $100,000 for the Ag Board and Cooperative Extension and others to bring properties and easements before the board for your consideration. And of course, we would always be looking at the state program first to fund those. But it would be a way to preserve the farmland. We have been losing farmland to development. And this is one way to protect against that, maintain that balance that we have here in Cleveland County. Be happy to answer any questions. And of course, we do have Mr. Jamie Bridges, if you had any technical questions.
I have a question, if my answer is public, but if the property goes into easement for farm use, it can't be sold to be used or anything except farm use for how long? And if it comes out, what does the property owner have to do?
Anytime the land goes into an easement through these conservation programs, it is for perpetuity. It's when you sign that easement, they're putting certain restrictions on your property. And you, before you even enter this easement, you have to plan out, you know, am I going to put homes on this? Do my children, do my grandchildren want a home? And so all that's planned out before you enter into this agreement with one of the land conserves. It's usually these are funded through, or the easement is held by one of the land conserves here in the state. And so, yeah, once it's put into agricultural use, once that easement is put on there, that's what that property will be set aside for, for perpetuity from now on. And so it's really, once it goes in, it's, you don't get it out, not without a whole lot of work. But yes, the land can be transferred to, like, generations, the land can be sold, but it is, it does maintain those agricultural restrictions on it as it goes from property on. That is your question.
But in the event that they do get it out, what's the penalty?
I honestly don't know of one that has come out, because once it's signed, it is legally binding. That those, that easement, usually it's the development rights are being held by that land conservancy. And once it's in, it doesn't come out.
Thank you.
So David, I have a few comments. So make sure that everybody's clear and the citizens watching is clear as well. This transferring this to this conservation easement has nothing to do with present use value and the tax. Right?
Correct.
I know that. I just want to make sure it's said, no.
Yes, sir.
So that's two separate issues. Those two are not connected.
Yes.
Second of all, this is a recommendation that came from the Ag Advisory Board to this board.
Yes, sir.
And it also has support with the North Carolina Farm Bureau.
Correct, and Cooperative Extension.
And, yeah, Corporate.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Or comments? Jamie, do you have anything else you'd like to add before we move forward? Or David, either one?
I would just add, I talked with one of the local land conservancies just this week, and they said that the state money, which is the Agricultural Development Farm Preservation Program, that's where most of the money comes from, that ADFP grant. This week, they said that for this cycle of applications, they had 115 applications statewide, and they only had the money to fund five of those applications. And really, what we're talking about, the money that we're setting aside in this trust fund, we're not going to have enough to buy an easement, but what we will have enough to do is help offset some of the costs to the state. And anytime that you can help offset that cost to the state, that's going to improve the ranking of applications from the folks from Cleveland County who are going to be applying. And so what we're trying to do is help our folks be able to get those funds a lot easier, to be more competitive when they go after.
One last point I wanted to make also is that this is owner choice. This is not being driven by the county. So owners have to choose to go into this program and follow the process.
Yes, sir, 100%.
100%.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I would be ready to make the motion that we do this if...
Yeah, if there's no questions or comments, I'll entertain them.
I think, you know, we have a rich agriculture heritage and, you know, as Charlotte moves toward us, we're going to get more and more urban and less and less rural. So this is a way to help that, you know, the reason we like living here is we are rural county and this is going to help just a little bit. So I'd make the motion that we approve this.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Our motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Or additional questions? All right. If not, all of our people will say aye. Anybody opposed? Good luck, Jamie. Motion carries 100%. All right. Last item on tonight's agenda is a closed session.
Mr. Chair, can I make one commissioner comment before we go into closed session? I just was so proud yesterday. I was going down Marion Street and there was a blue light and I thought we had, there was an accident. When I went in the pouring rain, one of our officers was putting gas in someone's car. And I was just so proud to be a part of Cleveland County, and I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Any other commissioners have any comments before we go into closed session? All right. So we'll make one comment in case no one's watching our members' lead, our citizens' lead, before we come back out. The next meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, September 16, 2025, 6:00 PM here in the Commissioners' chambers. With that, let me read this statement. Closed session. Per North Carolina General Statutes 143-31811A6, to consider the qualifications, competency, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer, our employer, prospective officer, our employee. That is the reason we're going into closed session. With that, entertain a motion to enter into closed session.
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of our people say aye. Anybody opposed? All right. The board now is in closed session, and we'll reconvene in a conference.
The board is now back in open session during closed session. We took had an opportunity to uh to finish the eval annual evaluation of the county manager. With that, the board voted in closed session to increase the manager salary to two hundred and thirty five thousand retroactive back to July thirty first, two thousand twenty five. With that, that brings to the end of our agenda. Anybody have any comments? If not, we meet again. What was September the what? September the sixteenth, six P M here in the commissioner chamber. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.